Mike's up close. All right. Evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the common council for the city of Gladstone, uh, on February 24th, 2015. It's now 7:30 PM. Ms. Jolene, can you do the roll call, please?
Counselor Nelson.
Here.
Counselor Musgrove.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Stichman.
Here.
Counselor McMahon.
Here.
Counselor Reisner.
Here.
Mayor Jacobella.
Here. You guys join me in a salute to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, we have any business, business from the audience tonight? Anyone wanting to speak?
Sure.
Well, I just wanted to introduce myself to the council. My name is James Pritchard. I am the recently selected president of the advisory council for the senior center. So I just wanted to...I'm surrounded by eight women, by the way, so this may be the only time I have to talk to anybody.
And he loves it. He loves it.
So anyway, I've lived in Gladstone for 16 years. I live behind the old stripway store and it's, uh, I enjoy living in the town enormously. So I just wanted to express my thanks for approving of me a couple of years ago and just let you know who I am and what I do. Thank you so much.
Well, he comes down and...
Thank you for your service, for helping us out.
And he always works with us for the luncheons, the big luncheons that we have, 70, 80 people. He's always there to help us out. Appreciate it.
Anything else? Anyone else want to come up? Okay. Uh, do we have anything on the consent, consent agenda? I don't think so.
Nope.
Uh, blow through that. Anything on correspondence end?
No.
Nothing there? Well, geez, we're just rolling regular agenda. Item number one, the exit audit by Marina and Company. Hi.
Hi. Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Tanya Moffett and I am a partner with Marina and Company.
And I'm Lynn Pope. I'm a manager with Marina and Company. How are you folks tonight?
Good.
Great. So we're here to present the June 30, 2014 financial statements for the city of Gladstone. And I have a brief presentation, um, prepared. If you have any questions throughout the presentation, feel free to stop me and ask them as we're going. We completed our audit of the financial statements and the related disclosures and we issued our report with an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, on December 29th, 2014. Our opinion covers the financial statements and the supplemental information. It does not cover the introductory section, which is listed in the table of contents. Accordingly, we express no opinion. There are a few items that were required to notify those charged with governance and some of those things include that there were no restrictions placed on the audit scope. There were no disagreements with management, which means that when we asked for things, we got them in a timely manner. There were also no new significant accounting policies, which the nice thing about that is if you compare the June 30, 2014 financial statements to the June 30, 2013, they're going to be comparable because there's no new accounting standards that would have changed the way that something, um, is presented. There are some accounting estimates that are in the financial statements that I'd like to bring to your attention, and that is depreciation. We don't know how long an asset's going to be useful. We don't know how long a car's going to be useful or a building, a roof, things like that. So that's an estimated number based on, um, standard, uh, estimated useful years. Compensated absences is also an estimate because we don't know exactly when employees are going to take their vacation. And so it's based off of their current pay rate right now, but they could actually take that vacation in another time period or at a higher pay rate. So it's an estimated number. As well as the OPEB obligation, which is the other post-employment benefits. It's a number that, um, is given to us through an actuary who's came up. It's kind of like this black box that they create this number. And so it's a number that is an estimate. We don't know exactly how much the other post-employment benefits is going to be. We did not find any transactions that the city entered into that there was, that it lacked authoritative guidance from the government accounting standards board or the AICPA. So everything, you don't have any unusual or strange transactions that there's not authoritative guidance. We did note that there were uncorrected misstatements with a total financial statement effect of $87,000. These, management determined that the effect of these unrecorded misstatements is immaterial. These misstatements are a result of excluding cash and investments of the library board and the senior sitter board in the city's financial statements. They were not included. In addition, the city does not record the utility billing accrual for the last 20 days of the year. So what that means is that we didn't record it at June 30, 2014, and it wasn't recorded at June 30, 2013. So there is one year's worth of utility billing revenue recorded in the financial statements. It's just that it isn't showing as a receivable on the, um, statement of net assets. There were audit adjustments made for the proper presentation of the financial statements. And these were primarily closing routine journal entries. The city contracted with an external CPA who went through and approved those journal entries for the city, and that gal also helped draft the financial statements for the city. There's also a report located on page 70 of the financial statements. This report is the independent auditor's report required by Oregon state regulations. One of the things that I like to bring attention to the council is that this report goes over some things that are not necessarily financial related. So we look at public purchasing and contracting to ensure that the city has went out for bid accordingly. And we also look at, um, the use of highway funds, that they're being used appropriately. We look at programs funded by outside sources, so if you're receiving any grants, we look at those. We also look to make sure that the city has insurance. And we also look to see if the city's in compliance with Oregon budget law, that the funds are held in a, um, secure bank account. They're covered by FDIC or, um, the credit unions. And we also look to ensure that the city is not over the legal limit for debt. So these are the things that we look at, and I'm happy to report that there was nothing that came to our attention for the city's financial statements for the minimum standards. There were two, um, significant deficiencies that we noted during the audit, and those are listed in a separate letter. The city lacked segregation of, adequate segregation of duties within some of the accounting functions. The individual responsible for processing checks should be segregated from the individuals who can approve, set up new vendors, and maintain and update vendor information. The individual responsible for preparing the bank deposits and bank reconciliations should be segregated from the individuals who process the payment. So that was the first one. And then the other one is that employees, city employees are circumventing information technology controls when they are using other employees' computer logins instead of their own. So, um, we've had a discussion with city management, and they are going to work on correcting these deficiencies that we, um, noted during the audit for the city.
The second one has already been completed, and what was happening was that, uh, the computer at the water utility clerk station was left open so that when that person wasn't there, someone else could get up and help the customer without having to log on. And, um, so anyway, that, that has changed. The, the other item, we're meeting with staff trying to figure out how we segregate the duties and implement that.
So is this something new that's just arisen, or has it been a long time challenge?
Um, I would say that some of the things have been happening for a while, um, but it was kind of a culmination that we've noticed that there were several little things that it rose to a level of a significant deficiency. So we decided that we would, um, report it to council and management, and management is taking appropriate steps to correct this, um, these two deficiencies.
Thank you.
Is there enough personnel to do it? I mean, you only got the three in there and...
That's the difficult part. There's a...I, I've had a discussion with staff talking about the findings and how, how do we make this segregation? And really, it's going to be a, a fairly complicated item to, to implement. In the past, um, there have been some, um, comments in the past about segregation of duties and, and management came away with, with the determination that it was too costly to implement. Um, I think there's, there are ways we can do this and keep the cost down, and we're intent on finding a way to do just that. And my goal is to have a plan implemented, uh, by, by the end of April.
Okay. I have a question. You looked into passwords, users and passwords and things like that. Did you also look in to see if we have an adequate disaster recovery policy for our IT?
No. We do know, we do look to ensure that the financial data is secure, um, but it's not something that I can recall what that is off the top of my head.
I think that, I, I think the, and Pete can probably answer to this. It's, it's something we do check to see if you have adequate backup. And I think that you have an IT consultant that does work with the city.
We, we do back up our records offsite. Um, they're kept offsite, so that, that does occur.
Do we have a written plan?
I don't believe we have a written plan, no.
Okay, all right. Um, how, how many years have we had the problem with segregation of duties and lack of?
I don't believe that there was an AFC 265 letter last year with this.
No, no.
So there was, there was not a, um, significant deficiency or material weakness in the fiscal year June 30, 2013. So this is the first year that we believe that it's risen to this level.
So it did exist before, or...
So you can have, so you can have internal control deficiencies, but as long as they're minor with segregation of duties, then we typically don't report them to this level. So there has been minor ones in the past, but not ones that rose to this level because we have different...there's basically these steps that we have to go through to determine whether or not it's a significant deficiency, which is, um, the first reportable level of a deficiency. And then there's a material weakness, which is a level above a significant deficiency, which is even worse. So right now, you're at that middle tier of significant deficiency.
So a few years ago, the city that you do business in, West Lynn, had a horrible problem with some of the segregation of duties. Are we anywhere near that?
Well, and, and I don't, you know, that was a number of years ago, and I, I'm from West Lynn. But from what I gathered is that there were, was no accountability. And the finance director had an opportunity to do pretty much whatever she wanted to do. And I would say over the years here, I mean, um, I think Pete has taken steps to, um, uh, the city's maintaining a, a check log so that we can see all the checks that are dispersed within the city. And, uh, I think that was a step in the right direction.
Okay.
Part of the issue with the city of West Lynn is they were also not having audits.
No.
At the time, they hadn't had audits for several years, so...
Fair enough.
And I think they threw out their auditor, if I recall.
Well, and I should also note, um, the auditors mentioned that we hired a CPA to help with the end-of-year financial statements. This person's also advising us on, uh, redoing our line items and our chart of accounts. And also, I'm tapping into her, um, her knowledge to help with internal controls. So that's part of the effort going on there.
And one more quick question. How long has Marina and Company been our city auditor? How many years?
I would say at least 10 years.
At least? Okay, great. Thank you.
At least so too. So that's the city's audit.
So, um, before we move on then, you mentioned about the, um, you checked and saw that, you know, we have insurance or the, uh...
Uh huh.
Did you do any coordinating or talking with them as to what some of their concerns might be in regards to financials and, um...
No, we just verify...
Accounting, whatever?
No, we just verified that the city does have insurance and it hasn't changed significantly from the prior years. We don't, we're not competent in training to know if there's even enough adequate coverage because I don't know how much this building should be insured for. We're not actuaries. We can't, we don't do valuations.
I'm not, no, I'm, no, I'm not asking about that. In that, um, our, our insurance company, uh, is, um, very interested in, in what they call, uh, best practices.
Oh, yeah, I've heard of that.
And so they are trying to, um, make sure things are in place so that, um, prevents accidents and, um, you know, thefts or, you know, things like that. And so one of the areas that they, uh, look at is financials. And so I was, that's why I was asking if maybe you had had communication with them in regards to that.
We don't communicate with the, the insurance company as far as that. I think that's between insurance company and management. But I've never done that with any audit.
That's not typically something that we would do in an audit.
Right.
Who is the city's insurance, C I S?
The, well, C I S and W, along with...
Yeah, I, I mean, I work on committees with people that are from C I S that we discuss things that are upcoming and things that could potentially have an impact, but not directly on an individual client basis.
And, um, I noticed the, um, letter to management was, uh, was significantly shorter this year than it was the year before. So the things that are, that aren't on there this year, uh, I'm assuming that you, you inquired to see if they had been resolved, and they had, so that's why they, they didn't reappear.
Correct.
And, okay.
Of the one item that you mentioned, the $87,000, uh, means that I'm not an accountant. Could you explain that a little bit further to what that really did? You made the comment that it came from some...
It's a phone copy.
Issue from senior center and also from, uh, can't remember what it was.
Library board.
Library board.
So the library board and the senior center board are not included in the city's financial statements. So they have some cash and investments, and they have some assets and things that could be included in the city's financial statements. They have, management has chose not to report those in the financial statements at this time. So it's immaterial, so we have passed on it essentially, that we don't think that it needs to be in the financial statements for it to be materially correct. And then the other one is the accounts receivable. So what it is, is that the city's bills go out, I believe it's the last 20 days. So the bills go out on, let's say, June 10th. That amount of revenue that the city will receive is not recorded in June 30's 2014's financial statements. They're recorded in the June 30, 2015's financial statements as revenue. Because we're not, there's two ways to record revenue. What you do is you put it on your books as a receivable, and then you record the revenue at that time. But what the city has chose to do is not to record the receivable and just give it basically on a cash basis for the receivable piece of it. Because the difference between what would have been recorded in the prior year, so if it was on a full accrual basis, June 30, 2013, it would have been about $20,000 that would have been recorded as revenue. And then at June 30, 2014, it's about 24. So the difference between the two is only $4,000. That's the net effect of the difference between the two. So that's why we say that it's immaterial and we pass on it. Because there's still 12 months' worth of revenue recorded in the books. It's just that we're not accruing that, those 20 days. I could sit down with you and show you on a piece of paper.
Did it answer yours?
There's, there's no fraud involved in any of that.
No.
It's simply a cutoff issue. It's more of a cutoff in timing issue.
And it's accruing, it's just accruing in a different time period than what you're looking at.
Right, right. And you're picking up last year's accruals.
Yes.
So it's just more of a cutoff issue. You don't want to...
No, I heard you ask.
Yeah, they don't want to do that.
So you meant, just mentioned about the library board and senior center had, have, each have a separate account, uh, or, or fund. So did you look at those to, uh, as to how they're being, uh, you know, like spent or, you know, that, that they're following the rules or...
Um, yeah, and I think, uh, the boards are having, they have monthly meetings. I think, uh, they have representatives from the council that attend. Uh, dispersments are being approved, from what I understand.
Okay. So...
We did not audit those numbers, though.
Right.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Well, and we've gotten the state, and we've gotten the statements, uh, bank statements for the cash accounts. And we understand that meetings are held and that there are representatives from council that go to some of these boards and that, um, they do go through dispersments, um, and I think they're part of the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So...
So, so who has control over those? I mean, the actual write the checks and, and reconciles them on a monthly basis?
Um, that we...
That would be the senior sitter and the library.
That would be their...
There's individuals there that have that asset.
Right, right.
And that's part of the reason that I believe that management has chose not to put them in the records. I can't...
To be included in the city's financials.
Yeah.
Right.
Because it's not records that are kept on site.
Can I mention? Uh, we have quarterly meetings for the advisory council, and the financials are all presented and given, and explanations given as to what's being spent and where it's been spent.
Okay.
And the city, and the city council representative is, is there. So it's, uh, it's very open, and Rhonda's very good about making sure that everything is explained, even the little nitpicky things that always show up. So I just wanted to tell you a story.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. We got one or something else?
We have one more financial statement to go.
All right. Let's do it.
So we completed the audit for the Gladstone Urban Renewal Agency, and we issued a report, which is an unmodified or a clean opinion on December 29th, 2014, just like the city's. That's why our audit covers the basic financial statement and does not cover the introductory section. I'm happy to report that the same like the city. There were no restrictions placed on our audit. There were no disagreements with management. There were no significant new accounting policies, so you can compare 2013 to 2014. We didn't find any transactions entered into by the agency that lacked authoritative guidance. There was an audit adjustment necessary, um, for property taxes, which is consistent with a year-end adjustment. The city's consultant and the agency's consultant approved those, or that journal entry, as well as drafted the financial statements. And I'm happy to report the independent auditor's report required by Oregon state regulations, which is located on page 19. We didn't have any findings, um, or any areas for improvement under the minimum standards report. We've appreciated the opportunity of service and look forward to working with you in the future. Does anybody have any questions on the agency's financial statement? Or the city's?
Was there any activity in urban renewal at all last year?
Yes.
I mean, did we spend any money urban renewal last year?
Yes.
We did. We, there were, uh, some sewer projects, I believe, that were, um, completed.
Okay.
Um, in the range of, I want to, not looking at the numbers, just my, uh, my memory, uh, 36,000, somewhere in that range.
Okay, all right.
And we're always available for questions outside of the audit. Our contact information is on our auditor's report.
Anything? You good? Yep. Good. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Now, do you want these back, then Pete?
You can keep those if you like.
Oh, okay.
If, if you don't need them, I'll take them.
Yeah, I'll read it before I go to bed tonight.
All right. Moving on to item number two then. On the regular agenda is the request for a proposal to provide a street master plan and transportation system plan update.
Mr. Mayor, uh, city council, uh, so what you have in your packet is a, a copy of the request for a proposal. We're planning on advertising this, and, uh, on page two dash three, you can see the, the timeline we're hoping to keep. And what this would accomplish is, uh, both a, a street master plan and a transportation system plan.
In this, uh, proposal, I did not see, and I think, I'm thinking we may have missed or I may have missed something, in that I don't believe we've asked the people making master plans to actually prioritize, uh, an element such as, we'll just say sewer, okay? And where is the most trouble spot versus the least trouble spot? In other words, where should we start to in fact do our implementation? Has that been thought about or...
You know, you're correct. It's not included in there. I, I can alter the language so that they do provide a prioritized list of capital projects.
I, I would suggest that, to, yeah, we talked about that, something that needs to be looked at.
And we'll, we'll be looking at a liquidated damages clause and a time of, is of the essence performance clause and some of those things in this, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We're, actually, the attorney and I spoke about another contract where we were including such language, so...
Right. So does that contract then, after we, you know, select somebody, does that come back to us for approval then, or is it...
Yes, yes. So basically, what would happen? We'd advertise, get the, the request for a proposal in, uh, staff would review those, and there's a scoring procedure laid out in, in the document. Uh, when a consultant is selected, we'd negotiate a contract, bring it back to council. If it's, uh, not adequate, we can go to the, the second runner-up.
Pete, that brings a question to my mind. This is, this is a part of this, and this goes for this as well as the next item. So I'll just kind of get it out now and won't ask it again.
Sure.
Um, is there a reason this process is followed? The reason I ask that is we're requesting a proposal, we're picking somebody to do the job, and then we negotiate with them. Is there a reason this can't be like any other project that we would do where you put it out, you put it out to qualified bidders? You would pre-qualify several bidders? You put it out there, and then they would come back with a price where you wouldn't be negotiating it with just one person? You would have, they would be doing their own negotiating through the bid process.
Right. And maybe the city attorney can help me with the, the statutes, but, um, this has come up before, before council because I, I think we'd all like to just have a, a dollar amount submitted so we can gauge the qualifications and, and the cost to the city. But unfortunately, when you're going out to bid for services such as this, professional services, uh, you're required to get, uh, to follow this, this procedure. Um, I don't know if Shane can...
And that also has to do with dollar amounts and what the contract value is as to certain procedures. And I think they've changed it in the last few years on how they, on this two-step process you're talking about, counselor. And I can ask David, he does, he does the, the lion's share of our purchasing, and he's the expert. I, I wouldn't want to say, be honest with you, on some of these particulars on the RFP process, when it's certain dollar amounts in professional services, David knows the answer better than I would. I mean, I, I have an idea of what the statute is because I've done some of these, but I'm not, I'm not sure if you, if you're mandated to do the two-step process or if it's, um, just recommended, because I'm not sure that you actually have to.
I mean, I may be mixed up on terminology, but this appears to be more of a request for qualifications.
answer better than I would. I mean, I, I have an idea of what the statute is, cause I've done some of these, but I'm not su-, I'm not sure if you, if you're mandated to do the two-step process, or if it's, um, just recommended, because I'm not sure that you actually have to.
I mean, I may be mixed up on terminology, but this appears to be more of a request for qualifications.
And I, it could be that it's a terminology issue, yeah.
We were, we were attempting to follow the template that David provided for with the water and, and stormwater master plan. We had this discussion back then, um, uh-
I can get the answer from David if you want to, um, and just do a quick update on that for the next council meeting, if it's an ongoing question that you're having.
I would appreciate it if you could. There is some Senate bill or something that was tied to, and I think David talked to me last year about that, when I asked, why can't you just go out and ask for three bids? And he told me why.
And I think that there's, I, I do believe it's a, it's a best practices, but that you do have options as the city. I don't think you're mandated to do this process, but I think that David believes it's the better way to go. And I'd have to ask him.
I'd like to know what the rules really are, so then we can-
Okay, we'll put that on an agenda item for you if you-
Is that gonna delay things considerably, if we could get that in two weeks?
Well, if we could do it in two weeks, I, you know, I, I don't see that as significant.
We did that on the military side. Took three throughout the highs, throughout the lows, and then one in the middle. At least you were guaranteed that they could make, they could make a profit off of it. Yeah, we did that for years.
Tammy Stempel, six nine sixty, Winfield Court. I'm on the Regional Transportation Advisory Committee and I didn't realize we hadn't done the TSP yet, but Jolene and I are working on some grants through the Transportation Growth Management Program, and one of the grants is for TSPs. So, there's an opportunity where we can apply, and I believe it's up to two hundred thousand dollars for, um, some funds to help pay for this, in case you guys are interested.
We'd like to come up with it.
So, the timing is really perfect for that, so just-
Two weeks won't hurt that any?
Um, we have to have the preliminary, not even a scope, just an interest letter in by the end of next week, I think.
Yeah, I think it's the twenty eighth.
And then we, if they think that we're somewhat qualified, then we have to give a more in-depth one by June first, something like that. So, we have some time, but the preliminary, preliminary is just a cover letter saying that we're interested in going for the grant. And we can do multiple ones, but I just remembered that TSP was one of them, that was a whole section of grants that are gonna be awarded.
Thank you.
So, we'll keep you posted.
Uh, the, the other question I had was... Am I good?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
The other question I had is, thinking back to the other master plans, we ended up stretching those out for thirty years. Um, is there a reason, I mean, if we're, if we're looking at implementation over thirty years on the others, would, do we want to look at thirty years on this, or?
I, I went back and forth on that. When, when we originally advertised that, we, we advertised for the twenty-year period and, and when we looked at the cost of some of the projects, then we made an administrative decision to put it out to the thirty years. Um, you know, to be consistent, that probably is a good idea. Um, twenty is, you know, twenty years is usually the norm when you're looking at master plans, um, but because, you know, there have not been a lot of capital projects in the last couple decades, uh, I could see the need being great, uh, the same as water and stormwater, so to be consistent with thirty years does make a lot of sense.
The only other question I had, and this once again applies to the next two as well, is, um, in this proposal, uh, on two dash eight, the bottom thing is payments, we're laying out a payment process. Will, is it important for this document, when we're going out for proposal, to include the things that, uh, Counselor Johnson brought up? The two items?
Right, the liquidated damages, the timings of the essence.
Is it important for those to be in here as well?
No, because that contract will be negotiated, it'll be in the contract terms.
Well, not if we don't have to negotiate it, if it goes to a bid process.
Well, we're talking about the two-step process and that you, the way it's currently set up, it would be the negotiated one and it would be in the contract, but we would put it in any contract, whether you do the bid or not.
The next part, um, is there anything in there, or would it be in the contract then, uh, with hold back until the project is deemed complete?
You can put that in there. You, you, the city's free to negotiate those terms, those kinds of terms, whether, whether that's a put-off to the particular applicant or not, you know, it's, it's a different story, but we can put it in there.
They just, uh, with the monthly billing service, they could be paid and not be done and go, well, we're not paying for anymore. We're not doing anymore if you're not paying us.
We're not doing anymore if you're not, you mean if you're holding money that's due? Well, are you, I guess I'm not following. We'd be, we'd be holding money?
Yes. Can, can we hold money till the project is deemed complete?
Yes. You could put in there, your billing, the way that you do the billing, when you put it in the contract, you could say the final payment is due X days from completion date, or whatever.
But that would be in the contract, not in the proposal.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And I'll double check with David to make sure there's no concern there, but I don't believe there is, counselor.
That's all I had on it.
Anybody else? So, I take it Pete, we're gonna try to find that out before we do this, right?
So, I'm, I'm putting it on hold until David Dukeman can take a look and report back at the March tenth meeting.
All right, so on to the next one, which is kind of a update on the sewer master plan request for proposals.
Right. Yes, and not good news to report here. We had today as the date to receive proposals, um, three o'clock today, and we did not receive any proposals. We did direct mailings to all of the consulting service, uh, companies in the Portland Metro area that we could identify and followed up with emails of the RFPs also. I've got some calls into, uh, some of the companies to determine why they passed us over, why they did not bid. Um, uh, they had about a month and a half to prepare the reports, I, so I, I think that's enough time to, to do the preparation. Um, but, you know, there must be something in here that's, uh, causing these folks to, to pass on that. So, my plan at this point is to make some contacts, find out why they passed, and fix the RFP and re-advertise.
How many did, do you know how many you contacted, being that it was direct mailings?
I want to say nine, ten.
And Brown and Company was one of them?
Yes. And that, that might give us additional information on the last item we just talked about, if, if there is something that's, that's lacking, that's causing them not wanting to, uh, submit a proposal, we, we need to know that.
Do you plan on bringing that back in two weeks also, then?
Yes.
Well, what's, what's the next course of action if in two weeks, none of these people still respond?
Well, well, we're to the point, we have to do another advertisement. So, the, the steps from this point are, okay, determine what, what is lacking in the proposal, you know, what needs clarity. Um, you know, I, I did receive some phone calls from interested, um, companies who wanted to do a proposal and they, nothing seemed out of whack or off the wall, so, um, so the first step is to figure out why they didn't bid, fix the proposal so they feel comfortable submitting a bid, and then re-advertise it.
We cast a wider net outside of the Portland Metro area?
I, I think so.
Yeah. Have you done that, or is that a?
Well, we haven't done that to this point.
Okay, all right.
And that's, is that in the Daily Journal of Commerce, too? Is there public notice, so I would assume you'd need and people look at it?
This time, we, we did not do that. We, we sent out direct mailings to all the companies, um, uh, so next time, we definitely will.
How do you plan on going back to number two? Plan on advertising that, the same way you just did, or maybe a little more?
I believe we'll, 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 we'll do more. Um, I, I think we'll do all of the above and the, the, uh, the Daily Commerce Journal, um, and maybe even the Oregonian.
Okay, we're all done with that? All right, that does it for the regular agenda. Now, we're moving to business from the council. We'll start down here, well, let me start down at the left with Kim tonight, for a change of pace.
Wow. Um, well, I got a few things, I'll try and be as brief as I can. Um, one thing I need to get is see if we can get a consensus. I did go to the Planning Commission, um, we was asking them to look at a few things. Uh, one thing I think we already addressed, and I took that off of their plate, uh, and they add, I kind of added one because of conversations that we've had. The design review standards may be a little bit loose and not stand up to litigation. And so, was, I was kind of asking them to take a look at that. I felt it fit within the parameters of their code review, and they asked if I would come back and get consensus from the council that that is a direction we'd like them to go. Uh, the other thing that, uh, Mayor Jacob Ellis and I spoke about today was also looking at the notification areas, uh, that when certain applications come up, uh, looking if the note, the note, the notification area is appropriate, or if it should be expanded some. So, those are two things that I'd like to discuss, so I can go back to the Planning Commission and say, yes, the council would like you to proceed with these, or know that, uh, the council is fine with what's on your plate already.
Well, the notify, the, the notification portion of it, in case, that might be cleaned up in the process of looking, exploring other options. But it needs to be a discussion we need to have on how we can change that.
Well, I, I think that would have to be a code change, uh, the notification process. So, yeah, I, I think that's separate.
It could possibly be done with policy, too, I believe, because the notification, I believe, is a minimum standard and there is no maximum on our code. I'm not sure of that, but I believe that's the way it reads. Um, but either way, um-
It's just something we should look at, cause the example is, you know, the recent one, they mail it to the five addresses nearby, and unless somebody talks to us about it, we only at the last second know that this is happening, and we have no chance to try to inject, or help, or do whatever, as a council, to try to change that process.
I, I see what you're saying, okay.
So, I can think of, you know, example off on Oakfield, too. The mailings were to five of the house owners that the developer owned, so what good's notifying?
And I think there's two parts to the notification. It's looking at if the size, whether five hundred feet, a thousand feet, whatever it happens to be for that application is appropriate. Um, and the other part of it is when notifications are being sent out to those, that notification area, that, um, commissioners and counselors also receive the notice. Uh, it's really kind of, it, it's kind of tricky when you've been elected to be part of the city and a resident goes, well, I got a notice and, well, I don't know nothing about it, I didn't get one. You know, so it kind of puts us in kind of a bad spot when we've got absolutely no knowledge of what's going on, or they know before we do.
And then the other, the first part of the equation was how much is on the Planning Commission's plate? Is this, the first thing you talked about, is this?
The design review.
The design review, is this too much of a burden?
I think it fits in perfectly with what we're already doing. So, there you go.
Chairman, chairman spoke?
It needs to be looked at.
Any opposition to it? Okay? I will take that back to the Planning Commission.
Please do.
Second thing, uh, our adjourned meetings. Uh, is there a reason that we, is it a, that we cannot have the minutes from our previous meeting available for approval in our consent agenda? Is that too fast a turnaround?
Well, it's, uh, I don't, I'm looking at the Assistant Administrator here for an answer.
So, for example, I just got the minutes and I haven't even had a chance to look at them. I got them today for the last meeting, so we can try-
It's pretty tight. It was just, it was just a question. Um, uh, see, City Hall Police Station Committee, um, where are we at with?
Yep, um, notification is going to go out tomorrow. I'm, I'm, I'm going to propose two dates where people can meet and, uh, see where we can get the majority of folks. Uh, if possible, uh, what I'm looking at is, uh, Thursday evening next week as a proposal, or, uh, the following Monday.
I've got on my list, uh, the police station grant, but it looks like we got a whole bunch of information that-
Well, you know, we received a copy of the contract shortly after, or shortly before the packet went out. The, uh, the contract contrad, well, maybe not contradicts the information we gave the city council before, but it, it's not as clean as, as what they had told us verbally. Um, there are provisions in that contract that talk about the use of the building for ten years after the work is done, um, but there's an out to that if there's a, a written agreement between the granting agency and the city. So, what I'm pursuing right now is to get in, in writing, uh, uh, statements from the granting agency that they would allow us to, uh, have some more room for, to maneuver with some of those provisions. With the new facility up in the air, we don't want to be locked into something if, if we don't have to be, um, especially when land on Portland Avenue is, is tight. Uh, we may need to rebuild right where the police department is. So, a lot of it depends on timing, but I, I think we need those assurances in writing, as council requested before.
How are we doing on time? Cause I know we was getting up against a timeframe on getting the application in, um, and we was hoping to make a decision at this meeting.
Right, well, we're, we're still okay on time. I, I plan on having this as an agenda item at the March tenth meeting, uh, hopefully with the written assurances from the granting agency, or an affirmation that they can't grant those written assurances.
And then the only other thing is, uh, coffee with the counselor. Um, we're still getting lots of people talking about code enforcement, and the other thing is business licenses, and I believe we've got some new information on the business license stuff.
Well, of course, one thing last night was about the, uh, Eighty Second Drive and Oakfield Road. I talked to Pete about that.
Okay.
See where we're at with ODOT, or whether it's ours.
But I, I think you're referring to the mobile home park discussion. Uh, I'll have Shane answer that.
So, the code is not completely clear on if you have a mobile home park, if the business license fee is per space or per the mobile home park. It's a little bit cleaner with respect to apartments and given the council's discussion of this whenever it was, uh, the master fee schedule was implemented last year. So, when the business licenses went out, you received some complaints and some attorney phone calls representing the mobile home parks. And given the- And given the lack of clarity in the code, what we've decided is the best course of action is to clean up that code and make it very clear if intent of the council is that a business license should be... include every space of a mobile home park as opposed to just one fee for the mobile home park. And clean up the code, but otherwise this year implement that for apartments, as was discussed at council, but not on the mobile home parks, given the phone calls we were receiving and the risk of potential litigation.
That's it for me. Thank you.
I have nothing at this time.
I wanted to, uh, thank, uh, staff at the fire department. They put on a great thank you for, uh, for family and the other firefighters for the, you know, dedication that they... they give to the city. It was, uh, well, I think well-attended and, um, well-received. So, thanks chief for that. I met with the Parks Board last night and, um, it was a little frustration, I think, in regards to, um, park rules, park hours that have been discussed, discussed, and discussed. And, um, was told last night that it's in your lap, Shane, so I'm not sure if that's correct.
Park rules?
Yeah, but I'm not sure if that's correct or not. Uh, but I... so, oh, look on your face, you're surprised. I didn't know.
I know that we've had city council discussions regarding park rules and whether the hours should be park-specific versus uniform.
Right.
Uh, and that's gonna require code updates. So if council...
Right.
If that is on my plate, I apologize.
No, no, I... Well...
We haven't had the conversation yet. But I believe the last time we looked at it, we were looking at the City of Milwaukee's code, talking about updating that for Gladstone purposes. And the Park and Recreation Committee made certain recommendations regarding the park rules and hours and whatnot. So we promise to that to them by the next Park and Recreation meeting.
And it will require a code change, so maybe that's, uh, part of the legal issue. But it's council's intent... I don't remember if the council actually resolved whether you were doing it park-specific or, uh, uniform throughout the city.
I think we...
Because I know there was questions about the river and the boating and fishermen and what time to be in there and the lights coming on and all kinds of things.
Right.
So it's... we can draft it however council pleases.
Well, I'm just passing on what was discussed last night.
Okay, so...
And then also the, um, master plan that we're hoping to get done in the next three to four, four months was discussed, along with some other things, along with the river. But, uh, so, you know, with the, um, Meldron Bar Park and, uh, so it was a good discussion. And then I was gonna... I was gonna ask... Kim brought it up about the, uh, police station seismic that we'll see it at our next meeting. And, um, I asked... I can't remember if it was last month, I can't remember if it was the first or second meeting, about fiscal engineering and contracting, uh, policy. It was something that was brought up from our auditor, um, you know, and bids and that kind of... that we're been working on for over a year. So where are we at with that?
It is something we need to pursue, but I'm not there yet.
Well, no, you keep saying... that's what you keep saying is pursuing. I mean, you gave us a date for like on the Parks Master Plan, three or four months. And, you know, some of the internal things, hopefully have it done by, you know, end of April. So I was hoping to maybe get at least a ballpark as to when we can get some of this other stuff done.
Let's... give me until June. I'll have it done by June.
And then tomorrow night is the Clackamas Cities Association Dinner. Uh, City of Camden's putting it on at, uh, Walnut Valley Country Club. And I'm going if anybody wants to tag along. I'll be glad to carpool. And that's it. Thank you.
Some years ago, there was a need for a new sign ordinance to follow up with the Oregon Constitution. We kinda got caught flat-footed with, uh, billboards along the freeways and what we could and could not regulate there, and our entire sign code was rewritten. I'm wondering if we haven't run into a similar problem with cell phone towers. Are we in a similar situation where we don't have ordinances on them, don't have requirements for sites and whatnot that should be better addressed within our municipal code? And what do other cities do?
I can look at that for you, Counselor. I'm not familiar with the cell... if you have a specific provision in the code right now regarding cell towers and when you... you're not saying it has anything to do with the constitutional issue.
No.
You're talking about just in general, maybe some cleanup on code language or addition.
My point was that when it came to, uh, billboards and other signage, we got caught flat-footed. I mean, our ordinances were out of date and didn't match with the Constitution and were not enforceable. I don't know that... I... apparently we don't have anything dealing with cell phone towers, but we're... we seem to have been caught flat-footed recently on that, so...
Well, what... I think you probably have at least something in there. And part of the cell phone... the cell towers is that it's... a lot of that's federally regulated, so the cities have some real constraints on what they can and can't do because it's overridden by the Federal Telecommunications Act. But I'm happy to look at what you do have and see if anything jumps out at us. As far as the sign thing, part of the problem with the sign codes is that although the Constitution stayed the same, Supreme Court was starting to interpret it differently. And then when you have new case law, you have to update the code, and I think that's what happened in that situation.
Right, things like design review. I mean, do we have the ability to specify, you know, how many sector antenna pairs can you put on one antenna? You know, those sorts of things. Uh, sighting of diesel generators and, uh, and, uh, what type of noise can be acceptable there? I mean, do we have some of those things? Are some of those things even available?
I'm not familiar with the noise part. There are some restrictions you can put on the number of antenna. But again, the Telecommunications Act, cell towers are a tricky business 'cause federal law preempts a lot of the state and local jurisdictions on what they can and can't do in the application process and how quickly it kinda overrides everything. But I'd be happy to take a look at that, see if there's anything that we could do differently.
Could you report back at a future meeting?
And you... well, we can follow up with specific concerns so that I know exactly what you're...
Yes, please.
Counselor Johnson, if I may. Um, at my... when I spoke with the Planning Commission at their last meeting, um, they... that is one of the sections of code that they are reviewing. And they have moved that to a higher priority on their list than what it was. So they are going to be looking at just that exact thing very shortly.
I think that... and that's a good thing, but I think in general, time is of the essence. Um, we've kinda gotten caught surprised if there's anything we can do to handle that better. I'd like to know about that.
Okay.
So, okay. Uh, and I'd also like to express as far as the City Council Police Station Committee that sooner would be better there too. I'm anxious to see a start date and anxious to see a meeting date. And that's all I have. Thank you.
A very important project that seems to keep things rolling is a property search. How are we doing that, Pete?
Yeah, I've modified our template for a service agreement and their... that service agreement now is with their attorneys. When we get that back, we'll run it by the City Attorney's Office. Our City Attorney's Office is the one that came up with the template. They think they can have it back to me this week. So as soon as we execute that agreement, we get going.
So we'll have that done before...
I believe so, as long as both parties are reasonable and can execute the agreement. I don't see why not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Wednesday, Dominic and I attended the Gladstone Emergency Management Team Meeting, monthly meeting, and we've got some work to do there. We need to... we used to have a lot of people involved. Now we do not have a lot of people involved. We need to rebuild this and get larger numbers so that if we have an emergency, we have a better response. And the second thing was, uh, this is... we had a meeting last night, uh, coffee with the counselor. I had it two weeks ago, the morning one. Last night was the evening one. And both meetings that we had with the residents, it came up about the problem with business licenses. And the one thing that came up was that the people that currently had... they used to have large businesses that may make a lot of money. Well, now they're retired and they still got the business license, but they make very little money off that business any longer. And they were looking at, maybe we can look at a scale and scale it down so they don't have to pay like they're made ten thousand a month, where they now they only make five hundred a month if the most. Uh, they don't feel it's fair that they should have to pay for a full-blown license if they've just still got it registered to their house, but they don't do much business, only once in a while. I think that's something we need to look at and take care of some of these elderly people that still wanna be involved, but can't be involved to the extent that they used to be. So that's one thing that I think we should do. And they... both meetings, they talked about the same thing. So I think that's... we should have that on our agenda.
You good?
I'm good.
All right, I... just one thing for me is, uh, we went, uh, last week or whenever to the Tri-Cities Sewer District, four of us and me, and got the tour, got to ask questions, uh, pretty impressive place. Answered a lot of questions we had for him. What I'm telling the other counselors, I think you all got the email to the invite to the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce, met March the fifth at three thirty in the afternoon at the High Cliff Pub. They're gonna talk specifically about Tri-Cities Sewer District, uh, the issues surrounding the Oregon city stance versus Clackamas County stance, where do we fit into the picture? And it's probably, if you guys haven't been to the tour or asked the questions, you probably ought to go to this thing because it's coming up on our agenda. Either one or both sides wants us to kinda make a decision on which way we lean. So, um, something you guys, we should get as much information as we can on it and so we can make a good decision. Uh, I see we have one of the commissioners here in our audience tonight, and he's talked to me earlier and said he'd be available for questions anytime. Same thing with Chair Ludlow. Uh, so that's coming up. Should put it on your agenda. Show up there if you can, ask questions, learn, and that's it. That's all I have. Thanks, everybody, for coming. And the meeting is adjourned.